I don't think she's gonna make it today.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session for July 17th. We've got a couple of items on the agenda this morning, a neighborhood association update and the care program update. Quickly, I'll throw it over to our manager, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, council members. Thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. So, yes, we have two great topics that highlight the services that are being provided to our community. We thought we'd start with the neighborhood association update, which is work that Heather and others have been doing out in the neighborhood. I know she bumps into you guys when you're at neighborhood association meetings. We've had a lot of high praise from our neighborhood leaders in having Heather be able to assist some of the main concerns that you'll hear about that the neighborhoods, associations have talked for a lot of years about is being better organized. And that's something that Heather absolutely brings to the table in assistance. And then we'll catch up on some care program after that. So Heather, if you want to start us out?
Well, good morning, Mayor, city council members, city manager. My name is Heather Tamaga, Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator with the Neighborhood Services Department. And I'm here to kick off your week with some great news about neighborhood associations. And our brief time together today, we're going to take a look at the work that has been done over the last year, and then we're going to look ahead to the next year. So our mission is to strengthen the operational capacity of the neighborhood associations. Since July 1st, 2022, the city has partnered with neighborhood associations to provide support in three key areas. Those are the Neighborhood Association Toolkit, the Leadership Workshop Trainings, and Funding. So we're going to start out today with the Neighborhood Association Toolkit. The Toolkit is a 78-page document that includes 24 downloadable customizable templates that are all focused on operational best practices for neighborhood associations. Content within the Toolkit includes governance tools necessary to manage nonprofit organizations, operations, including board and committee responsibilities, and effective meeting management, finance with a focus on budgeting and developing internal controls, risk management strategies, which includes a section on insurance, communication, volunteer management, grant writing, funding opportunities, and research tools. And then we also have a section in there called Ideas and Action. And that's where we focus on uplifting specific neighborhood associations, highlighting some of the practical and innovative programs that they have done, which can also be replicated throughout the city. Each of the content sections focuses on a best practice. So the bylaws example up there, it includes a written best practice, templates if available, and additional access to resources. So that if neighborhood leaders want to do their own research, they have credible resources to do that with. So you'll see in a few slides that we have 69% of our neighborhood associations report using the Neighborhood Association Toolkit in their day-to-day operations. And we also have our top five most valued templates, which includes our articles of incorporation, which we're going to talk about today, the bylaws, a board transition checklist, which is a checklist if you are transferring, say, from president to president, is a checklist of items that you need to consider and conversations you need to have as you transfer that knowledge. Excuse me. A budget template and a meeting agenda template. Our second area of support was through the Neighborhood Leadership Workshop Sessions. From September 2022 through May 2023, we offered six leadership training sessions. These topics were identified last year by neighborhood association leaders as top training priorities. Those included the Toolkit kickoff, where we taught them how to use the Toolkit and what was included, risk management and insurance, budgeting, taxes, how to become a 501(c)(3), as well as a session on grant writing, best practices, and developing sponsorship and advertising opportunities for your neighborhood association. These sessions were each one and a half hours long, and we brought in a subject matter expert to come and teach the class. And those experts also partnered their content back to the Neighborhood Association Toolkit and those templates, so that leaders always had something to walk away with at the end of the session. The sessions also include time for networking, so we tried to do a lot of peer-to-peer networking. I know that we do have a lot of wards that meet, what the neighborhood leaders meet for that ward, but it was really important to try to get neighborhoods to connect across cities and to have some shared experiences and really just develop their own leadership network across the city. Our average attendance was 42 neighborhood associations representing 24 neighborhoods. I will say that our highest attendance session was 80 neighborhood leaders came together representing 37 neighborhood associations. And again, those attendants varied because we were just trying to meet people where they were at. So some sessions might not have been as well attended, because maybe we already had a lot of people who were 501(c)(3)'s, or maybe just weren't there yet in their journey. For the most part, we held true to that average, usually a little bit above that 42.
I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Were there some neighborhood associations that didn't send leaders to any of the sessions?
Yes. We did have a handful of leaders. We had nine. Correct. In the leadership workshops. Correct. Generally, the reasoning, because I did ask, you know, what is it that we're not providing or what is not connecting with you? And generally, the reason was, we just feel that we've already done those things, or we feel like that's just not where we need training.
Advanced neighborhood associations that didn't attend? Like, these were all neighborhoods that were incorporated as nonprofits?
Not all of them. Most of them that I can see here on this list were probably some of the more advanced neighborhood associations that had a good set of systems. There is one on the list where they are struggling, and that's going to be one that I'm going to be talking to Councilmember Gatto about, which he's aware of, that we need to talk about. Probably some incorporation or some additional deep dive in with that neighborhood leader. Does that answer the question? Okay.
That would be, I'd be interested in seeing who attended and who didn't.
Absolutely.
How that lines up with what systems are in place.
I'll send that out. Okay. I will send that out today after the session. Our next level of support was through funding. So at fiscal year 23, we offered, every neighborhood association had the opportunity to apply for and receive a $1,000 grant from the city that would be used for capacity building. So to receive that funding, each neighborhood association had to meet four criteria. First is you had to be recognized as a neighborhood association by the city of Des Moines, and that's done through the neighborhood recognition policy, which is approved by city council. You had to be incorporated as a nonprofit in the state of Iowa. You have to obtain an employer identification number, and you had to have a bank account established in the name of the neighborhood association with at least two signers on the account. So when we started this journey last year, last July, we had 24 neighborhood associations that weren't incorporated. And as of June, we actually have 44 neighborhoods that are incorporated. When we started the journey, also, they were just varying levels of who had an employer identification number, who had bank accounts established. So it really did take us most of the year to walk through that process with neighborhoods. But I will say that those 44, that that number represents that each of those are recognized by the city, that they all are incorporated in the state of Iowa, that they have employer identification numbers, and that they have met the banking standards. So that's 44 of our 49 neighborhood associations.
Heather, one more question of the, let's see, there are 49 recognized by neighborhoods, right? So that means five have not met that standard. But of those five, do you think that they all have a separate banking account?
I will say, of those, uh... By looking at the list, I would say probably five of them do. The others, I just don't know. We had a lot of discussions. I tried to walk them through the process. Talked about the benefits of going through the process and the benefits of funding, but I can't validate if they have the employer identification numbers or the bank accounts.
The checking account, I think, is really important.
Yeah.
If, if nothing else, for appearance, that there's... Nothing that, of course, many of them don't really have large checking accounts, so that's, you know, I get that part of it. But I would just be curious if there's a way we could push them toward at least getting a separate checking account.
Yes, they are on my list. I've actually started to try to meet with some of those neighborhoods and try to sit down and say, even if incorporation isn't for you, or if you don't want to apply for the capacity building grant, do you have these other elements?
Okay. Thank you.
Could that not be part of our criteria of even being recognized as a city neighborhood? That's a minimal that you have a separate checking account.
I think that would be a great conversation.
Okay, for future.
In my FY24 recommendations, looking at that recognition policy and trying to make sure that it's a win-win situation for both the city and the neighborhood associations. And so I think that we could consider the banking account.
Okay.
So here is just the list of how the funding was used. One important thing about this list, two important things. So everything was definitely used for capacity building, because that was a requirement of the grant. But it's also important to note that a neighborhood might not necessarily use all their funding towards one of these categories. So for example, if a neighborhood wanted to use funding towards incorporation, that's a $20 fee. So then they had $980 to use in any of these other buckets. So they could have done several things, like a P.O. box or website posting, logo design, quite a few of them did. And then what we would see is a lot of times, any funding that was left would be shifted over into the neighborhood events. So I'm going to pause and see if you have any questions about that. And then in the handout that I put in front of you this morning before you arrived, there, on the last page, there's a list of all the neighborhood associations that actually received the neighborhood grant. So all the work that we did this last year was measurable. As I mentioned earlier, we had 69% of neighborhood associations reported using the Toolkit. We had 82% of our neighborhood associations attend at least one leadership workshop training. Out of that, though, we had 43% of our neighborhood associations attended four or more trainings. And we even had a top 10% that attended all six trainings. So that was just very exciting, and it kind of became a contest at the end, because I would send them little emails afterwards and say, hey, congratulations, one more training session. I didn't have any awards to give outside of knowledge. And then we had 86% of our neighborhood associations receive the Neighborhood Association grant. We had... Seven.
Because they merged one.
Yeah, some of the numbers are a little because of the merger. But we had seven that did not. But again, I'm having conversations with them to try to bring them onboard, again, at least for the banking. But I think that this capacity building grant, which was also approved in fiscal year 24, is amazing for the neighborhoods. And my goal is to see 100% participation. In addition to that, we had some boundary changes and one merger last year, which was exciting. Our merger was Fort Des Moines, Magnolia Park, and South Park Neighborhood Associations came together and formed the South Central DSM Neighborhood Association. And they are rocking and rolling down there in Ward Four and doing amazing work. We also had boundary expansions with the Brook Run Neighborhood Association in Ward Two, Watrous Heights down in Ward Four, and McKinley School, Columbus Park. So we're seeing a lot of movement out there, a lot of increased representation of our residents.
Last meeting they had, there was probably 35 to 40 members there. So that was good.
Yeah.
Really good compared to, they would have three to five at each one of their individual meetings, if even that.
They have a very active, engaged board.
Yep, they do now. And they're all willing to kind of share in the duties, so that's good.
I think the one thing that I should mention that you cannot capture on any slide is just the amount of momentum that we've actually gained over this last year. And I hope that you've all felt it as you've been out talking with neighborhood leaders. I know that when I started, there was, we want to participate, we want to be involved, but we just really don't always know how. I think that through these services of the Toolkit, the workshop trainings, and the funding has at least elevated that momentum. When I leave neighborhood leaders, they're all very excited. There's still a lot of work to be done, and I think that they all know that, but they're feeling the support that has been approved by city council. And I think that every time I know that when I'm out with you, you always receive a lot of great feedback about providing them that level of support. So that's very hard to capture. I think the other thing that's hard to capture is just, again, all the success that we've had this last year is because of the neighborhood association leaders. You know, I feel like we've been the vehicle for change, but they've really had to take that opportunity to embrace the change. And really, overall, I think that everybody has embraced the newness, the change. Change brings excitement, it brings discomfort. But I think that they've really embraced it, and everybody seems to be very eager for the year ahead. Speaking of the year ahead, just a few program recommendations. Obviously, we want to keep that momentum alive and going. I know when I say that the Toolkit is 78 pages, and you might think, how could it be any bigger? But it can, and it will be. I have a few more sections to add that are in particular to engagement strategies. We want to focus a little bit on D E I. That's very important to neighborhood associations. As well as finishing out the Ideas and Action piece, because my goal is to feature each neighborhood association, whether they see it in themselves or not, each one is doing something amazing that can be shared across the city. We're going to offer more leadership workshop trainings this year with four sessions. Again, we're going to focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion, print communications, websites and social media, along with neighborhood event planning. These are all topics that have been identified by the neighborhood leaders as high priority training topics. And then we're going to work to create a training library. So we're going to start to take all that work in the Toolkit and break that down into short, like 10-minute or less, on-demand videos. Because some people learn by attending a workshop, some people learn by reading about it in the Toolkit, some just want to, me, if I can't learn about it on a YouTube video in 10 minutes or less. A lot of our neighborhood leaders are looking for information when we're all not around. So those are nights, late at night is when I get a lot of emails, and on the weekends. So just giving them access to get information when they need to receive the information. We're going to continue again with the funding. So again, it's, city council approved that each neighborhood association could apply for and receive a $1,000 grant. Going to shorten up that funding window a little bit this year, just because most of the neighborhood associations already meet the requirements. And so we want to make sure that they get that funding sooner. Those seven who have not yet met the requirements, of course, we're absolutely going to work with them, try to get them through. So if they need a longer time in order to get that funding, happy, more than happy to work with them to do that. We're going to work on some more awareness. So starting to do a little bit more outreach within the community. Some of that will include putting articles in CitySource to talk about what is a neighborhood association. I know that if I'm out, a lot of residents I speak to don't always see the difference between a neighborhood association and an HOA. Or maybe they don't know that they live in a neighborhood, or they have access to a neighborhood association, and the benefits. So we want to start to push that information out, as well as trying to find other ways to partner better with other departments within the city, just to find more collaborative ways where we can kind of sneak in the message about neighborhood associations. And we're also going to update the website, just to make that a little bit more intuitive, and create a clear content area for residents, and then a clear content area for our neighborhood leaders. Then our final is the review of support systems. So as we already talked about, looking at that neighborhood recognition policy, considering what we might want to add is requirements for neighborhood associations, or maybe things that we want to remove. I don't know what that looks like yet. Exploring the strategic consolidation of neighborhood associations. So we have several neighborhoods that we know particularly want to look at merging with neighboring neighborhood associations. So learning from all of our experiences with the South Central DSM, and trying to come up with some really great merger opportunities, maybe incentivizing mergers where that's going to be necessary. And then creating more opportunities for the newly-formed Neighborhood Outreach Advisory Committee, a name that is still my creation, and I don't always remember the order in which to say it. But that's the former NRB that transitioned over to the Outreach Committee. We have 16 members of that committee now. So we have four per ward that are on there. They are all eager. They have a lot of great ideas. They want to dig in and do more for our neighborhood associations. So I think a lot of their work is actually going to be focused on developing programs for fiscal year 25.
Those NRB members were appointed, and you said they were going to serve for a year, and then we would reappoint them or appoint someone different. Are we coming to that year yet?
We will at the end of this year. So that's a calendar year.
Okay.
Yes.
So the end of this year?
Correct. And then I'll be reaching out.
Okay.
So what I will do is ask for interest, who wants to continue on. And then if there would be any vacancies, I would go out to our neighborhood leaders to see who might want to step into that space. And then like last year, I just send each ward person a list of who's interested in their ward. And then I leave it to the ward council.
I think it would be nice to get, give others the opportunity to sit on that advisory board, since you've got the momentum going.
Yeah. It's a great board. And there, again, that's a lot of momentum happening on that board as well. So you would expect to hear from me about late November, early December.
Do you have any idea how many of the neighborhood associations have transitioned from monthly meetings to either a bimonthly or quarterly?
I do.
I thought you might.
I was prepared for that question, but I might have left that note at home. I know that we have nine that are bimonthly, I believe 13 that are monthly, and then the balance are now quarterly. We had quite a few that transitioned from monthly to quarterly this past year.
Yeah.
I also know that the most popular meeting night is Tuesday.
Yes, it is.
Especially Ward Two.
It's a, I, are you done?
Yeah, I was just, I think the second Tuesday of the month, there is many as seven meetings on that particular night.
Anywhere from seven to 10, generally.
What else?
That's, I just, when I first got on the council, going to all the different neighborhoods, I, meetings, I just saw that there was a need. So the hiring of Heather was a tremendous hire for what you've given the neighborhoods and helped them give confidence, and hopefully give them the tools that they can help now to expand and get the message out and help make our city a better city. So I just want to thank you for the work, because I see you at a lot of the neighborhood meetings. And I want to thank the neighborhood leaders for their, you know, taking the effort to learn things new and try to, you know, make things better for their neighborhoods, which they have always been trying to do. So thank you.
I have the luxury of having the best job in the city, so. I tell people that all the time. Sometimes a few people at Parks and Rec disagree with me, but...
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of how the neighborhood leaders communicate with everyone that lives in the neighborhood?
It's really all over the place.
I saw your eyes roll a little bit on that one.
I'm sorry?
I saw your eyeballs roll a little bit.
Well, because I can't give a definite answer. So we have some that communicate only by email, and you have to have found the email list or somehow, you know, attended a meeting, which is hard to do if you don't know that there's a neighborhood association in your area. And then they develop a list, and you're only on that email list. And then we have some that do boundary-wide mailings, they do the newsletters to every household. Some do print, some only do social media, some, again, go back to the email. So that's something that we want to focus on this year within those leadership workshops, is how do you develop a well-rounded communications plan to communicate to all residents within the boundaries?
I think social media by itself is not working, and those that have four or five people that attend the meeting, it shows, so.
I think it's, my, my line is generally that social media in and of itself is, it's just one tool. But again, if neighbor, if residents don't know that they live in a neighborhood association, they're not necessarily looking for XYZ Neighborhood Association on Facebook, if they have Facebook. Because now there's a big trend to leave events, social media and Facebook. So it's how do you realistically, within very tight budget constraints, I certainly understand that, how do you get out and communicate with those residents? A newsletter might not be it for everybody. We're seeing a lot more boundary-wide postcards go out that will have, River Woods has done a great one down in Ward Four, that just has all the dates on it, access to social media, here's how you find more information, links to a website. Sometimes people just, they don't know where to look if it's social media alone.
Even one time a year. I know I visited with Sheridan Gardens over the weekend, and I said, get a calendar put together. Pick your dates, get a calendar, get something out through Nextdoor Direct. And I gave her the template that we use and said, get this out, even if it's one time a year, but you can put that information on there that they can keep.
Right. Yeah. And some can only afford to do it that one time per year, so.
But that's okay. If they've got $1,000, $1,000 would, would certainly do that.
We've also looked at some, trying to teach about cost-effective tools, using the Every Door Direct through the United States Post Office. Several use the Polk County Print Shop. So just also trying to give maybe more affordable solutions, also easier solutions.
Anybody have anything else? Heather, thank you so much. I appreciate your work and your coordination to bring sort of a consistent message and way to communicate neighbors with the city and neighborhoods to the residents. I remember, you know, early on, when the neighborhood associations were first starting to form, with the Fran Kunses and the Nadine Hogates and those people who had active interests on specific purpose, that they brought people together to work on. And of course, different neighborhoods had different issues. But it's, I think, great to see your, your work at helping, you know, sort of educate these, these leaders on how a neighborhood association should work and give them some of the tools to, to make it happen, everything from communication to, you know, a voice and a connection to the city and connecting them to assistance when they need it. So thank you so much for your work, and let's keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Our next subject is the care program update.
Mayor and council, I want to also remind everyone that another benefit of our neighborhood, having strong neighborhood associations, is that it establishes and is an opportunity for local leaders to be available and learn about the city's functioning, that then may become board and commission members. So it's, it's a great opportunity to have that venue available for young leaders.
Well, actually, if Heather's still around, that raises a question that, I was going to wait on this, but I'm curious how our neighborhood board... on this, but I'm curious how our neighborhood boards, the leadership of those boards, how it matches the demographics of the neighborhood. I have some concern that, that there are parts of our neighborhoods that are not, not well represented in the neighborhood associations. And particularly if that is viewed as a leadership pipeline for, for, for boards and commissions, if there is a problem that neighborhood association leadership doesn't reflect the full neighborhood, we're, we're, we're further cementing that issue. And so that's, I guess, a general concern. And I've talked some with Heather about that. But, but I, I guess I want to be careful about that because that, that maybe perpetuates some inequalities that already exist in our, in our city and, and almost makes them systematic.
We can absolutely look at the numbers on that and see where improvement is, is needed. So our second topic here is the CARE program. And I want to start this conversation off with somewhat of an obvious statement, but it's, it's pretty important to understand that not every emergency that, that we receive through 911 dispatch is criminal in nature. And that we find quite a few of these calls are more personal effect, concerns with interactions that an individual might be having that indicate that they could use additional assistance. And so they are absolutely emergencies, but they are better opportunities for some of our nonprofits to assist us in addressing. And so with that, we've been working on a couple of different programs where we combine our police department expertise with some of our nonprofit partners that are essential to these services. And one of those that's more fresh and, and new to us is the CARE program. So I asked Officer Garcia to, to kick us off. And thank you to Broadlons for their assistance. As I see Steve in the audience as well. Lauren?
Good morning. Like I said, my name is Lorna Garcia and I have the privilege of working with one of my passions, which is mental health. So I get to do things on mental health, from training officers to working with our mobile crisis response team, and then to the development of our crisis advocacy response effort, which is what we're talking about today, CARE. So just to give you a refresher on where we were at before CARE, I'm going to go over the mobile crisis response team, kind of our original crisis model, the creation of CARE, how we got to where we are today, our partner, which is Broadlons Medical Center, to provide that staffing component, what our staffing looks like in this small team, the two components that make up CARE, just to kind of give you an idea of how it's structured, when we implemented CARE, what are CARE services? What do they respond to? We're going to go over that. The equipment that allows them to do their job safely, our successes, our challenges, some data, where we're at with that data, what that's showing us, and then how we're going to move ahead with this program. So I just want to talk about, refresh you on the mobile crisis response team. This was formed in 2001 and it has evolved greatly, but the basic components of the team have not changed. It works. We're pairing a mental health professional with a law enforcement officer on scene at a call. And they're going to go to those calls where there's a safety issue, there could be a criminal element as well, or we're not able to establish if there's a safety issue. So we're always going to default and send mobile crisis if we're not sure. Broadlons is our provider of staffing for mobile crisis. They do respond countywide throughout Polk County. However, we use them the most. Our data shows they are in Des Moines at least over 90% of the time, month to month. And so we do house our mobile crisis response team within our Des Moines Police Department. It's a great central location. And again, we are, be able to talk about the clients in our community because we're serving all the same people. One thing I will say though, mobile crisis, even though they are co-responders, that doesn't mean that they have to have police with them all the time. Initially, when they get to the call, if we establish the scene is safe, there is no need for officers, officers to be there, then at their discretion, they can say, hey, you guys can leave and they'll take care of the call for us, which is fantastic. I don't know if I could give you a statistic, but the nice thing is now that they're transporting more again, that's really opened a lot of doors with that piece of it. Because the transport, if we decide they need to go somewhere, they're voluntary, those are the issues. A lot of times they're like, hey, I'm good with this person. That saves tons of time, just that transport to getting that person into that hospital or clinic. It's been amazing.
20%? What, I mean, what's?
Probably 20%, maybe is a fair guess, if I had to guess.
That's good. Is there a way to, on that, so that in the future, we might have a, we might have a better sense so that we don't have to guess that we, we just would know?
I don't know. So a lot of the data we get, the really detailed data comes from Broadlons. They have a set standard by state law that tells them what they have to report on. So it's structured based on that state law. I know that we've looked at adding some different data components to that and it's kind of messed with the reporting of the standardized data. So I'm not saying no, it's a possibility.
Right. But we also have data from every stop that we go on, right?
Yes.
And so, I mean, is that something that we could add on, on our end, just to?
I can definitely make a note of that and see how we can add that possibly.
I mean, it might be worth, worth understanding that, that piece because I know that the, the question about the need for an officer on, on the mobile crisis team calls is, is a pretty important one, right?
Right.
In terms of evaluating that service and the severity of those calls versus others.
Sure. Yeah. So talking about how we created the crisis advocacy response effort. So it kind of started with AMIS, a Mid-Iowa organizing strategy. They were really vocal in saying, hey, we took, we need to have something other than this, this uniform responding to children adolescents in a mental health crisis. And we heard that need. So the city was dedicated, you guys put, portion of that local option sales tax towards saying, let's do something to provide that kind of response without this uniform. We know that nationwide, there are several, a lot of major metropolitan areas that are have programs that do not include law enforcement officers in their response. We know it can happen. So we're like, how can we make that work for a city the size of Des Moines? One particular modern model in Austin, Texas, kind of piqued our interest because they offered a complete diversion plan. And complete diversion means we don't have to send anybody out in the community, time, saving resources, saving money. So we really liked that. So back in 2021 in the summer, we, a group visited Austin. We wanted to see firsthand, what were they doing there? How is it working? They have a crisis call diversion program, which they started in 2019. So still, still a fairly new program. That was embedding those mental health professionals within their telecommunications center to have those call takers transfer those calls to those mental health professionals. They could triage those calls to determine who needs to go to those calls in the field, if anyone. They can do short-term crisis counseling, proper referrals, offer community resources, and do safety planning over the phone. We know a lot of people call, 911 is the most popular phone number. People know how to call it, will know how to access it. And a lot of times, people just need the information or they just need to hear a caring voice over the phone. Sometimes that can be enough just to alleviate whatever is going on in their brain or whatever the crisis may be. And then they're fine. We don't need to send anybody out. And that's kind of the goal and what we liked about the crisis call diversion program.
You have, I mean, do you have the stats of how many, when they call, how many you were able to divert and not have to go out?
We do have that coming up in our data piece. Yes. So Austin, obviously, is population over a million, much larger than our city. They had several field response. They had the mobile crisis response, like we do with an officer. They had a two-person mental health professional and had a paramedic social worker response. They had three kinds of field response. While we were in Austin, we actually started in a classroom, we started writing down our ideas, what we're going to take, how we're going to create a program here. We wanted to have that person in our dispatch. We thought that that could be valuable to just divert response completely, like we talked about. And we also thought having those two-person mental health professionals would be ideal. So one thing I really advocated for was remaining with Broadlons as our provider of staffing. We knew that they already provided staffing for mobile crisis. Why would we not continue with them as our partner? We're sharing the same information about our same clients in our community. Having them as a partner also gives us access to health information on an as needs know basis. So on those calls, it can be really valuable to know, hey, this person has schizophrenia. Well, that's going to change my response to a person perhaps than if I don't know that about that person, right? It can really help to maintain safety for officers and for the client themselves. Just that continuity of care. A lot of the people that we serve actually go to Broadlons for their healthcare. And so it's really nice to have that person in the field be part of that system as well. A lot of continuity. So at full staffing, there are five positions for our CARE team. It's a small team at this point. This is composed of a CARE crisis advocate. There are, there's fully staffed if we have three. They have mental health field experience. Most of them have a bachelor's degree at least. They work in the field or they could work at our telecommunications center. The second component is that pediatric care clinician. We have two of them. This is the piece that the city is funding particularly. That's the mental health professionals with experience with children and adolescents. Right now, we have a nurse and we also have a person with a PhD in special education, so working with kiddos. So they're going to pair up in the field and I'll get to that. Absolutely. This is not age exclusive at all.
Okay.
So just to break it down, there are two components to this CARE umbrella. So we've got our CARE and our telecommunications center, that's just staffed by one person. They have a little more limited hours. It's just 40 hours a week, Monday through Friday during the day. And we have our field response. It's always two people for safety. We've got that pediatric care clinician paired with that crisis advocate. That is seven days a week during the daytime though. So, and the crisis advocate can rotate to the telecommunications side as well, but we keep the pediatric person in the field. Mobile crisis supplements, of course, or officers. Yes. So we started this program July 5th, 2022, just about a year ago now. Since that time, we have had ongoing collaborative meetings. This is comprised of Des Moines PD, Des Moines Fire Department, Broadlons staff, of course, and the Polk County Behavioral Health and Disability Services. We're reviewing data. We're trying to problem solve and we're trying to think ahead in these meetings to keep this momentum going. So to talk about what kind of calls is CARE going out on in the field. So there are, if there's no safety element, safety risk, no criminal element, or if, then we can send out CARE. That means routine welfare checks. We get numerous welfare checks from different places, could even be a service provider. Hey, can you check on my client? I haven't heard from him in a few days. Tons of those. It doesn't take a police officer to knock on a door. So those are simple, easy ones we can send CARE out to to save time for our officers. Obviously, mental health calls. We have numerous people that are not dangerous, never have been, but they struggle. And they just sometimes, especially if they live alone, they just need that caring in-person contact. And we can send CARE out to them. Fallout phone calls, officers produce several cases regarding mental health calls that they've been out on. And they always do their own follow-ups as well to check in with that person after that initial contact. We want to keep them on that path to keep them out of crisis. So that is the goal of those follow-up phone calls and make sure that they know what the next step is. Because in the moment, it can be overwhelming and they might not be getting all the information they need to know what the next steps are. Also, mental miscellaneous calls, child, parent, child, parent disputes, especially during the school year. Hey, I can't get my kid to go to school. Why do we need an officer to go out for that? Maybe we can mediate something there. But I also see a lot of opportunities just to be creative with CARE because they have the time, unlike officers that have to go trip to trip a lot of times. If somebody can't get their psychiatric medications, hey, I can go help you with that. Because, you know, I missed the bus or my transport didn't, wasn't able to come this week, or whatever the case may be. Or I need to get my antipsychotic injection. Hey, I can take you to a clinic this one time. Because we know that there's value in that. That's going to keep that person out of crisis. But it's, it's whole, whole health as well. I know that our team has been out to house and they found out, you have no food in your fridge. We also know that people are not going to be well or focused on their mental health if their basic needs are not met. They can remind people that, hey, let's get you hooked up. Let's take you to the food pantry, those kinds of things. So although we are focused on mental health, we know that it starts with your basic needs as well. And so we try to look at it that way too. But again, a big piece of it is they can provide that transportation piece, which is a huge barrier for a lot of people. But not only that, it's discreet. They're not in a marked squad car. Nobody knows that they're mental health professionals. And so that's a huge time saver as well.
Transportation barrier? I mean, how much of a, how much are you finding that across, across the board? Is that preventing seeing doctors and getting to healthcare, but is it also, I mean, is it a barrier to picking up prescriptions? Like, like what?
I think it's fairly common because with the nature of mental illness, your brain might be occupied with other things. It's very hard to stay organized depending on what your illness is. And so if they haven't been hooked up with the right services or the right level of service, it can be easy to miss appointments or, oh, I forgot to get to my prescription. They don't know how to navigate the DART bus system, whatever the case may be, right? And I do think transportation is always a huge barrier.
I think that goes back to whether we should do more on-call through DART. Where people that need help, they can't navigate the system, it doesn't get them to inform where they need to be, that DART needs to look at more on-call, especially now that we hear these cases, it even makes it more important.
So someone like that is likely already qualified for paratransit, depending, I mean, if it is a mental health or a disability. I mean, folks qualify for paratransit. It's a question of.
If they know about it.
Connecting them with the service.
I just want to talk a little bit about the equipment we kept in mind. Safety is of the utmost importance for our staff. So we thought it was important to not have, to have something to show that they have some kind of designation or they are official. Because you call 911, you expect to see this. When somebody shows up, it just looks like you or me. People are a little surprised, but usually pleasantly surprised. So Jennifer here is our team leader for mobile crisis. She's kind of my model for today. They wear Navy polo shirts with Broadlons on it. They wear a lanyard that says their credentials in their first name. So you can see that you're answering the door to someone safe. And I thought that was important. They drive those unmarked SUVs. They have cab-like barriers. So it's just like a Plexiglas. Have you ever been in a cab in a big city? It's the same thing. And that's just to keep our staff feeling safe and confident they can get the person there securely. They have those computers, just like the officers have. So they're getting the same information officers have getting to a call, which is really helpful, especially in that two-person response. You can have one person calling the call taker. Sometimes the person, the client's not telling us everything. Their person can find that phone number and call them and get that information. They have their radios, of course, because it's a lot quicker getting on the radio and asking for help versus getting on a cell phone and calling 911. And they also have that wealth of community information flyers to really inform people of their, of what's here in our community. So I want to talk about some of the successes. I do think CARE is a trailblazing program for a city this size. I mean, we are doing things that big cities are doing and that's amazing. It's well received. People love to see people that they can identify with. I mean, I can, I can get over this uniform because of my speaking skills, but they don't have to. Because they're just, people are opening up to them a lot quicker because they don't look as official, don't have that authority. They're doing those follow-up calls, those caring contacts, trying to keep people out of crisis, which is obviously our goal. Taking those routine calls where officers don't have to and they can get into the calls that have a criminal element. They also have the same training as mobile crisis. One benefit of just having this extra staff has been they're interchangeable. So usually we only have one mobile crisis worker working per shift. So believe it or not, we have more than one mental health call at a time here in Des Moines. more than one mental health call at a time here in Des Moines. And if mobile crisis is tied up, but CARE is available, they can go assist that officer on that mental health call. So that's been really helpful, that we have that extra mental health professional staff just to respond to those calls as well. Again, we're saving time. We're using resources more efficiently, getting those, the right people to the right call, which is ultimately our goal. I will add that we have a nurse on CARE, and that's really helped identify, sometimes we get, there's a medical component that's causing a change in behavior. That insight is super valuable, insight, knowledge that I don't have as a police officer, and I've seen that firsthand. So challenges. I identified three major challenges I see are holding our team back. One is staffing. I'm sure you're not surprised to hear that this is a challenging job market. And this job is unique. We need one-of-a-kind people that are confident, assertive to walk into somebody's home, and understand human behavior, and really get down to what's going on. So we're having a hard time maintaining a full team. We're down one CARE employee right now. We're also training two new ones just in the past week. So it's like we're always starting over almost. And so that's been a huge challenge for us.
What are we paying? Like, what?
I cannot answer that. Okay, yeah, Broadlines can probably
Right. So we're comparable to the healthcare sector, but we know there's a shortage there.
We've got, we've got a lot of shifts are being covered through overtime or through public meetings. We've got, we are, and that's what we're doing back at the hospital, too. We've got people working extra shifts. That is a five-year sustainable? No, it's not. But we're leveraging that. You may have heard about that healthcare grant from Polk County. They gave us a million dollars. All the hospitals and I've got together, as well as the healthcare schools, to hire women advocates.
I think before the meeting, I was talking with Lorna. I think you said it's also, this is new. So what they expect of the job is much different. It's much more difficult, as you said. Expectations of what they thought it was going to be is different. So I think that's probably for the first turnover, some of the issue.
Absolutely. I mean, mental health is different in a clinical environment versus in their homes. Happening at that moment, it's very challenging, and it's very emotionally taxing to do that work. But there are people that want to do that work. We just got to find them. Our second challenge is just utilizing the team. Because it is a newer program, and this is a challenge, I will say, that Austin, Texas definitely dealt with, and they voiced that. So this shouldn't be surprising to me. Just, they're so safety-minded. They're so used to using officers for every call, and they're so worried about sending the wrong person and having something bad happen. I do have some data showing we're making good decisions, because we haven't had many opportunities where CARE needed to call for officers. But I think just over time, we're going to get better at recognizing, we can let things go, and, you know, we don't need an officer for everything. They're so used to officers doing it all. And frankly, we're used to doing it all. But we're welcome to hand out for some of our workload to them. And I think it's possible, and I think with time, we will get there. Data collection. So before we started CARE last year, we integrated some data points into our computer-aided dispatch system on our end. Broadlines also has their own data. So we have two sides. This is all workplace on our telecommunicators, who also already have a lot of responsibility to do a lot of things in a short amount of time. And so that has been a challenge. It's just about developing those new habits for them and recognizing, like on the weekends, or after hours, when we don't have CARE, remembering, hey, CARE's not here, but this could have been a CARE call, and hitting that data point. Things like that. I think we're going to, again, we're going to get there with habit. So this is a monthly look at some of our data points through our computer-aided dispatch. So we have measured the calls by the person in dispatch, the calls by CARE in the field, the total calls overall by CARE. And so that's where you're looking at diversion of officers, basically. And then you're going to see those low numbers for those missed calls, what I just spoke about. And I know that that is not accurate data. That is just, the data points aren't being utilized, frankly. And so I anticipate that those are going to continue to rise as we recognize that we need to use those. I did highlight the high numbers. But if you look at it overall, you know, 1,500 calls officers didn't have to go out to approximately. That's good. But we can do better. But we're getting there. The next I'm going to show you is just regarding under 18.
Slide for me for a second. So there's some monthly variation. Is February just a lower month? Because it's
So I remember in that monthly meeting, collaboration meeting, one of the dispatch supervisors was talking, she said, call volume was just down overall. Not just for CARE, it was just for some reason, officers even, just low call volume overall. So it kind of reflects that, I guess.
And do we have any sense in terms of, I mean, this is the number of, I mean, it looks like they're, you know, in the neighborhood of 150 calls a month. I mean, do we have any sense how many, if we had unlimited resources at CARE, so if we had more folks at dispatch, like more, you know, we're staff, like you knew every time there was a call, you'd be able to respond that way. Do we have any sense how many calls we could respond to with the CARE, CARE team, or some, some variant of that?
I don't know. I could speculate. I don't know. I think we could easily double. I do think that there's opportunity. Because I have some data showing what mobile crisis is doing, and I think we can dig out of what mobile crisis is responding to, to take some of those calls as well.
And this is also, do we have a sense, because this is sort of a nine to five?
Right.
Do we have any sense of, is there greater need for this type of response, you know, 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM, or 3:00 or 4:00 AM?
I can tell you, overnights is slow. We have one mobile crisis worker overnight, very slow overall. So the need is not there necessarily on the overnight shift. Perhaps the afternoon, if as data supports it down the line, I'm hopeful that we could add some time in the early evening type of shift. I think that there might be some opportunities there. So this just shows kind of our calls, specific to children. Again, CARE responds to anybody, any age. But there's really no pattern. It's kind of up and down. There was a huge decrease in June, which I expected, because in my experience, summer is a slow time for children calls. Children are not in a structured environment, and they don't have a lot of demands placed on them. So they're just not in crisis as much, frankly. And that is a consistent pattern that I have known for many years. So that's reflective in the data there. Yes. Yeah. So I wanted to show kind of the high numbers for mobile crisis, because I think this speaks to the need, how many mental health calls that there are in our community. I mean, in May, 519 calls that mobile crisis responded to. And so there were probably more. Again, there's only one mobile crisis worker that is working usually at one time at a shift. So the need is there, and I think that they're seeing these numbers. There are probably opportunities where some of these calls probably could have been handled by CARE if they were available, or if it was identified.
I guess that goes back to when we talked about, we can wait till the end, to the need to expand. That's probably maybe on your future slide.
So how are we going to move forward? Like with that last slide, I said, the need is there. There's a lot of people in our community that are struggling with our mental health issues. And we are fortunate to have people ready to respond to that. So I think that through time and habit forming, we're going to get there. I do believe having those new telecommunications supervisors are going to be a huge asset to this program. So they have been training new dispatchers. About a quarter of our dispatch staff are new and training. So they haven't had the time to actually supervise and make sure people are using these data points. And so when they are able to have that time to be actual supervisors and remind the staff, hey, think about CARE, use CARE. I think we're going to see that in our data. Also, looking at those creative ways to use CARE. I would like to see us move towards a proactive approach. So when we have that downtime, let's go out to those areas where we have vulnerable community members and just start that conversation. And a lot of these clients, we know already, just from our previous interactions, you know. Hey, you know, following up maybe in person, or have you been down to primary healthcare for centralized intake? I mean, whatever the case may be, I think there's some opportunity there to keep them busy and keep people out of crisis. Obviously, we need to attract and retain talented CARE staff. That is a huge component of it. Want to continue our monthly meetings to keep evaluating this program, to keep moving forward positively. One thing I will say that's in the works is we're going to have a new recorded salutation when you call our dispatch center. Do you want police, fire, EMS, or mental health services? They were doing this in Austin. That's where we got this idea. And I thought it was brilliant, because it's a way for the person to just hear for themselves. That's an option. Just even recognizing that, but also letting the dispatcher recognize, oh, that's what they need? That's going to keep that in mind. Well, I need to send them to CARE then. And I think that's really going to help propel this program as well. Our contract for CARE services expires at Broadlines in 2026. We've got lots of time to make it better and work, move forward as we want to. That is all.
I just want to bring up the need for more, which we obviously know we need more. But one thing, after talking with the partnership and different people downtown, is even creating a CARE team for downtown. I mean, the whole metro corridor, if that could be a possibility and working on as we go forward, because of all, some of the issues we've seen, and additional officers. And do we train any of our EMTs, any of our fire emergency officers? They could be a source, too. I don't know if you do training with them?
We do training with them about CARE and mobile crisis, as they understand, because they use them as well. I was speaking to that downtown team. I think that, talking about that proactive report, approach, you know, seeing how that even works and reporting to you at that level. If we get our CARE staff, is that working? How is, how are people responding to that? Just to see where that, how that's working, I think would be valuable, too. Thank you.
I have a question. When you referenced the Austin model, you said they also had paramedic social work teams?
Yes.
We currently do not, right?
Right.
Is, is that something that there would be value in looking at a paramedic social work, work teams? And would that allow us to respond to different calls that way? Like, what are your thoughts there? And what are we seeing? Do we have any data related to that?
I don't know about the data portion, but I definitely see value in that. A lot of people that have mental illness also have health issues. We also, I always get the list of our frequent callers. We get a lot of people, repeat callers. The medics are going out there every other day to people. A lot of it is people that live alone, some minor things. If we had a team specific just to respond to those calls, where there's a medical component, or frankly, like I was talking, if we could do those injections in the field right then and there and keep people out of crisis, out of the ERs, that would be huge, really huge.
What would it, what would it take? I mean, do we need like system compatibility with like medical records? Do we just need?
I know you would have to have medical oversight. Doctor would have to sign off on everything. I mean, there's components to it that I'm not knowledgeable about. But we have had Des Moines Fire at all our meetings, because we do see that as a possibility of expansion down the line. That's what they've always been part of our meetings, because we see there, there's value in that.
And I think they were open to it when I talked to them, that they felt it would be important to get train, at least the training that you provide, because I think you do a lot of the training.
Yes.
So could, could a doctor at the emergency room sign off on that if, if Des Moines Fire Department had the capabilities of, or you had the capabilities of doing those injections? Could they get a?
So maybe Jennifer could speak to it as a nurse.
The paramedic, so Broadlines is not currently employed paramedics, Mercy One and Unity Point Two, mostly in relation to their first responders. That'd be new ground for us. I think we, through our partnership with Polk County and San Vincent de Paul, there will be a paramedic staffing model going into the Suburban Center planned for opening about a year from now. That's the 19th Incorporated Building. It's my understanding is they have, they do have to have an overseeing physician. So all their actions then are, they'll be a physician. They're available then during the day, also a physician at night. So I think we're totally on board with venturing in that area. I think it's just a, just got to have, make sure you're aligned by all the rules. And because in rural areas, many times it is paramedics that are responding. Many times, volunteer paramedic, they're the first responders.
So can that doctor, like, do this role that we're asking them, where they would be in contact, radio contact with the responding officer, and we would be able to maybe accomplish this when the Suburban Center opens?
Yeah, I can't promise, you know, emergency physicians, because they're, you know, but I mean, I think, I think what San Vincent de Paul, we're partnering with them on the Suburban Center, and they're looking at a dedicated, part-time medical. I think even the Fire Department is a full-time physician, their medical director, because he also shares some
It's a part-time.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, you know what I said, because that's obviously they're the most costly part of the spectrum. So anyway, but we're totally on board with trying to investigate more.
Carl. Steve, while you're there at the microphone, just want to compliment you for participating in the Riverbend monthly public safety meetings. Actually, there are a lot of people in the room that, that are on those calls. You have a really incredible profile in the community. And so does Broadlines, by the way, so.
Thanks, Carl.
Thanks.
And I think the, I've been impressed with the Neighborhood Association. And I know city, city staff that call as well. So, but yeah, they'll, it seems to me to be a really win-win for the neighborhood. I mean, they identify that maybe they've got some trouble areas in terms of maybe people that excess garbage, or people that have maybe been using drugs in a certain area. And then they all pitch in, like on Saturday morning, city will come in and do a special pickup. I mean, I'm impressed by how they handle them, so.
It's a great effort together. Like Carl and I have been on the call.
Yeah.
It's a great effort that shows the neighborhood working together to help the people in their neighborhood. It's all about helping. It's not about making it, just get them out. But it's really helping the people within the neighborhood. So I think it's a model, maybe, I guess Heather's already gone, that other neighborhoods could use, too.
Well, QuickTrip, QuickTrip's almost always on.
Right.
And I know CARE has been out, so that, that QuickTrip is the center of the universe for people sort of collecting, or just, you know, sort of going one way or the other. But QuickTrip, because I know Met with CARE team a few times, and just everybody on the call is really a problem solver.
Right, try to help people.
They're not getting on the phone to gripe. They're just trying to figure out how to, maybe 10% griping, but mostly, mostly problem solving. So the other thing I was going to mention about, we are leveraging, so we know we've got a three Medicaid MCO system now, NSC organization, Malina just jumped in, that. And so we are trying to leverage our mobile crisis services to get more Medicaid income coming into that. You know, you look at Medicaid, somebody walks into our office, they do an assessment, we do the documentation. That's pretty clear. But when you're out on the street, when you're doing a mobile response, you know, you're not doing all that same documentation. You're really, you know, making a decision about how to disposition this citizen as best we can. So we're trying to finagle ourselves in that situation, so we can pull down more Medicaid dollars, so it could be a shared funding between Medicaid, Polk County, and then, of course, all these services. So thank you for the So thank you for the contract and opportunity to form for Broadline.
Thank you.
Look forward to continuing working together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Lorna's great.
We need to clone her. How many, a lot more Lorna Garcia's.
Thank you.
Lorna, one quick question. You were talking about staffing and the hours of staffing for CARE and MCRT. It looks like those are daytime hours, mostly. Would you say the crises occur on the calls that are incoming to 911 and other? Are they mostly during the day? I would think they would be mostly at night.
I'd say they're day and afternoon, day, afternoon, evening, evening, but not overnight. Yes.
Would it be helpful, as we think forward, that we would staff it 24 hours?
Well, we want to move towards that, but we just got to get there using, starting with the basics, like I talked about, being that full staffing. I think, that's definitely where I want to move to, is more, more hours, maybe not even overnight, I don't know if we need that, but just got to get the data to support it. But yeah, I would love, would love to see more services. We just got to get people in the habit of using them, first of all. That's where, kind of where we're at, just these basics, and then expand from there. That's my hope.
Especially in mental health experience and working with a lot of those professionals and talking about some of those instances, it seems like those people really get in a state of despair more after the sun goes down. During the daytime, they're out walking around or doing something, and it seems to occupy them, but at night, eh, that's my, just throw that out.
Yeah, no, appreciate it.
Thank you for your work. Got any notes to conclude?
Nothing more to add.
All right. I believe that we have a city council meeting this evening, and no, no closed session, so we'll all see a little before 5 o'clock. Thanks, everybody, for attending, and thanks for the presentations. This meeting's adjourned.